Good evening councillors and members of the public. Especially could I welcome councillor Gerry Hyman, glad to see you back. I hope in full good health, we missed you last night, so it's good to see you back at Weston. Before we start the meeting, the fire regulation drill is on the screen behind me. If there is a fire alarm, we meet over in the Waitrose car park under the canopy over there. Could you make sure please that your mobile phones are switched off or into silent? Public as well please, if you have them, thank you. And can I just remind you to make sure your card is well and truly pushed into your microphone, otherwise we won't pick up what you say. So please, could you just make sure that they're properly installed? Can I just remind the public that this is not a public meeting? It's a meeting that we hold in public. And please, would you restrain from making any comments on anything you hear tonight, however deeply you feel about it? This is a meeting, please, that is, as I say, a meeting in public, but not a public meeting. So if we could move on to the main agenda, we've done items one and two, minutes of the meeting, they've been laid on table for the last 30 minutes, the meetings of the meeting which took place on the 29th of March. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record? I'll do that at the end of the meeting. Have there been any apologies for absence, Emma?
Yes, apologies from councillors Pat Frost, Martin Lear and John Ward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Declarations of interest, have any members declared any interests before the meeting, Emma?
We have a non-perpetual interest from Farnham Town councillors, other than that I've not received anything.
Does anyone have any other interests that they wish to declare at this point? Questions from members of the public, Emma? Have there been any questions?
None received.
Which moves us on to item seven, the relevant updates to government guidance. And I know Peter's got something quite lengthy tonight, so there will be a written form of these provided afterwards, because it is quite a lot to take in. Thank you, Peter.
Yes, thank you Chairman. I have three matters to update the committee on. The first relates to the Neighbourhood Planning Act. Members, former committee members will recall that I've previously provided an update to the committee on the Neighbourhood Planning Bill. This has now received royal assent and now comprises the Neighbourhood Planning Act 2017. The first part of the Act largely deals with the processing of neighbourhood plans, processed through to adoption. However, there are two sections which directly impact development control, in particular decision-making. So I'll just pull those two sections out. Section 14 seeks to introduce restrictions on the imposition of certain types of planning conditions. And where we're applying pre-commencement planning conditions, we will require agreement from the applicant prior to the council applying any pre-commencement conditions. A commencement order is awaited for this to take effect, but this will now likely be after the general election, for obvious reasons. So that's just something to take into account, that if we've got an item coming towards committee, members feel that in addition to any conditions that officers have applied, they may wish to apply more pre-commencement conditions. It would be useful to advise of those ahead of the committee, so if they were to be put forward, we can seek agreement from the applicant. Alternatively, we can look for slightly revised wording, which doesn't necessarily restrict pre-commencement, but secures appropriately the detail that members might need. The second part, section 15 requires an amendment to the General Permitted Development Order. And what this says is, as soon as reasonably practical, after coming into force of section 15, to restrict permitted development rights currently applying to pubs and wine bars, which comprise effectively drinking establishments, but only if they fall within use class C4, sorry. It is important to note that a number of drinking establishments actually fall within use class C3. And this is due to where they've got a restaurant attached to them, and the predominant order of business is a restaurant, rather than just a bar or a pub. So permitted development allowances still apply to their A3 uses. Department of Community, local government have already amended the General Permitted Development Order. And the permitted development restrictions and restrictions to changes of use of use class A4 premises comes into force on the 23rd of May 2017, and we will of course reflect or update our procedure on that point. We've also, on moving to the next update, an update to the EIA regulations. The regulations for environmental impact assessment have been revised under the Town and Country Planning Regulations 2017, and come into effect on the 16th of May of this year. I'll just run through the main differences introduced under these regulations, which relate to validation requirements for screening opinions, more flexibility during screening to take mitigation into account before finding if development comprises EIA development. So we can take account of that upfront, and that could potentially mean we can screen out more development that previously may have comprised EIA development, because we can take that mitigation into account. We now have to set out the scope of a scoping opinion, and for an EIA, this is now compulsory. This also must be completed by a competent person, must write it, and we must be consulting competent people in reviewing that detail. Although no guidance is specifically provided of what that competent person should be, we will of course ensure that the appropriate person that's giving that advice has the appropriate qualifications in that specific area on that matter. I assume some further guidance may follow, but nothing at this stage. There's also the introduction of additional items, including population, human health risks, and risks from accidents or disasters. There's specification of what information should be in a decision notice, and also introduces the monitoring conditions. So there's now four stages in the process, you have the screening process, if that suggests that it is EIA development, we have the scoping, we will then have the process of handling the environmental statement, which comes as part of a planning application, and the additional matter that's added is the monitoring of conditions through that process. So we will of course be updating our guidance when we have an EIA screening opinion through to scoping and follow through the legislative guidance. And the third point, just to update members on, is regarding the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan. I think most of you will be aware of this, if not all. Members will be aware that the Neighbourhood Plan referendum held last week, and the majority who voted were in favour of the draft plan. As such, Waverley Borough Council must make or adopt the plan within the eight weeks of the referendum, which takes us to the 29th of June, unless there are unresolved legal challenges. So on that basis, the plan represents a material consideration to which substantial weight can be given in considering the planning balance when determining planning applications or appeals. Whilst members will be aware of the legal challenge to the plan, in this instance, the scope of the legal challenge does not prevent the council from making the plan, it is therefore becoming, will therefore become the development plan for that neighbourhood plan area. As I say, there's a lot of information there, and I will circulate that with appropriate links to updated legislation, but hopefully that gives you a general overview of the changes. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. I'm not going to take questions on all of that, I just feel we'd be here all night, because I think we'd all have about a dozen questions for each one. So Peter has promised us that we will get the information, we'll get links, we'll get directions where we can get the extra information, and then please, you know, contact the officers outside the meeting, and if there's anything you think we need to air at a meeting, by all means, you know, bring it in. But I think tonight, that is just so copious, that the chances of having a brief question or answer on that one are almost impossible. I've been very remiss, I haven't introduced the officers, mainly because some of them are very well-known, but we do have a new face here. So obviously, I think most of us by now know Elizabeth Sims, our head of planning, and Louise Jandell, who is, I always call her head of Weston and Sutton, but I'm sure you have a proper title. Peter Cleveland, our head of DC. And then the new one, I'm going to come back to you, Dan. The far end, we have Lewis Jones, who's joined us in the legal department. He is going to be the new Dan Lucas, as it were, but we're not losing Dan, he is moving across into another role within the legal department. So Lewis, welcome to your first Western area meeting, and we look forward to hearing your advice throughout our decision-making. Which takes us straight on to, I hope, the applications for planning permissions, should a site visit be necessary, as a result of anything on this particular agenda, then it will take place on the 6th of June, at a time to be agreed. Moving on then, straight away to the planning applications, item A10090 has been deferred, so moving straight on to item A2, WA 2017 0137, the erection of nine dwellings with associated access, parking, amenity space and landscaping, following demolition of all buildings on site, removal of hard standing at Noel Farm, 19 Old Park Lane, Farnham. And I gather, is it you, Louise, who are going to take us through this one?
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd just like to draw members' attention to a court judgment that was received this morning. This has confirmed that housing land supply policies, which should be restricted to policies that deal with the supply of housing, and not to policies which seek to restrict housing. Paragraph two on page 65 of the agenda is therefore no longer considered to be correct, as it includes policy C2 of the local plan as a housing land supply policy. Notwithstanding this, policy C2 should not be given full weight in the determination of planning applications, as it is not entirely consistent with the MPPF. This is because it refers to the protection of countryside for its own sake, whereas the MPPF places emphasis on protecting the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. This judgment does not affect the overall conclusions of the report, as the proposal is considered to have an acceptable impact on the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside, for the reasons expressed in the agenda. The tilted balance set out in paragraph 14 of the MPPF would still apply, in that the proposal should be approved unless any adverse impacts would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits, when assessed against the policies in the framework taken as a whole, as policy C2 is inconsistent with the MPPF, and is therefore considered to be out of date. Moving on to the site itself, the site is located to the west of Old Park Lane, and to the north of Middle Old Park. Access to the site is via an existing vehicular access in the south-east corner onto Old Park Lane, here. The site comprises several buildings, structures and a sand school. The site has a lawful use as a commercial equestrian facility, and the surroundings consist of two residential buildings here to the east, and a farm to the south, with some more residential buildings to the west beyond the application boundary. This slide shows the aerial photograph of the existing site. As you can see, from the site itself, in the centre, these are the buildings which are located on the site, and the sand school. And then to the east, those are the residential properties, the farm to the south, and then some more residential properties to the west. This slide shows some existing site photographs. The first photograph on the top left shows the entrance to the application site from Old Park Lane, and the photograph on the top right is taken from the north-east corner of the site, looking into the site. These three photographs are all taken from within the application site, and show the existing stables and buildings that are on the site at present. Turning to the proposal itself, the application is for the erection of nine dwellings, following the demolition of the existing buildings on the site. The proposed dwellings would comprise a mix of two two-bedroom properties, four four-bedroom properties and three five-bedroom properties. The proposed layout would take the form of a courtyard style, with each dwelling facing inwards, towards the courtyard which comprises open space and parking. Each proposed dwelling would have a private garden area, which would extend to the site boundaries. Access would be from the existing access point in the south-east corner of the site. And parking would be provided for each dwelling, according to the council's parking guidelines. The design of each of the dwellings have been proposed to be barn-style properties, centred around a feature farmhouse, which is plot seven, here. This slide shows the elevations of plots one and two, which are located here to the east of the site. Both of these would be four-bedroom dwellings, designed as a pair of semi-detached barn-style buildings. The external materials would be facing brick plinths with a dark-stained timber cladding and clay roof tiles. Traditional barn hip-hens would be incorporated into the building's design, with a central hipged gable and low dormer windows, along with conservationary roof lights. Plots three and four would be of a similar design and scale to the buildings for plots one and two. In plots three, sorry, plots three to six, plots three and six would both be two-bedroom properties at the end of the building, and plots four and five, which would be located in the centre, would be four-bedroom properties. The materials would match the building for plots one and two. This slide shows the elevations for plot seven, which is the feature farmhouse-style dwelling. This would appear different to the others, and would have a different, would have a traditional design, and use a mix of traditional materials, including flint and clay roof tiles, which would match the other dwellings. This application has been accompanied with 3D visual aids, in order to help put the scheme in context. This is a 3D visual looking west, and you can see the site access here, at the bottom of the image. And plots eight and nine, which here, I haven't shown you the elevation specifically to these, but would appear similar to the remainder of the dwellings on the site. This 3D visual is taken from within the site, looking towards the courtyard, with plot one on the right and plot nine on the left. This 3D visual is taken from the opposite corner, looking back through the scheme, with the entrance in the corner over here. And the feature farmhouse, which is plot seven, is here, in the foreground of the Please can I draw members' attention to the update sheet, which outlines an engineering report has been received by Vemco about the structural integrity of the bridleway. And the County Highway Authority has assessed the report and concludes that it is a worst-case scenario, but has recommended that a condition requiring a construction transport plan is amended to include condition surveys of the track, protection of statutory undertakers' equipment, making good the unbound surface of Old Park Lane, and measures for protecting the safety of bridleway users. Turning to the determining issues, the matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development. The members should be aware that the site would be the redevelopment of previously developed land, where policy indicates that new development should be directed. The loss of the lawful use, noting that the council has no policies to protect equestrian uses. The location of development, noting that whilst the site is up an unmade track, this would be subject to improvements before and after construction, to improve the track for users. Furthermore, the site is located only 1.1 kilometres from the centre of Farnham, and is therefore considered to be located within a sustainable location. Housing land supply, noting that the proposal would provide nine dwellings, which would contribute towards the council's housing supply, and for members to be aware that the council cannot currently demonstrate a five-year supply of housing. Highways, parking and bridleway considerations, noting that the proposal would not result in intensification of vehicular movements above the established lawful use, noting also that the proposed parking would meet the council's guidelines, and that any disruption during construction could be minimised through the provision of a construction transport management plan, which has been secured by a recommended condition. The County Highway Authority have raised no objection to the proposal. Air quality, flood risk and drainage, contaminated land, archaeology, heritage assets, financial considerations, biodiversity, and finally, the effect on the Thames Basin's heath, SPA. Members should be aware that a legal agreement is currently being drawn up to secure contributions towards Farnham Park, to mitigate against the likely significant effect on the SPA. This was the only reason the previous appeal inspector dismissed the previous appeal. It is considered that an appropriately worded legal agreement will overcome this one inspector's objection to the previous scheme. Turning now to the matters of judgment, which are on the right-hand side of the screen. First issue is housing mix. Members should note that whilst the proposal would not be fully compliant with the strategic marking housing assessment, it would provide an appropriate mix of two, four and five-bedroom homes, and the previous appeal inspector did not object to the housing mix on the previous identical scheme. The impact on the countryside, the site is previously developed and comprises several buildings and areas of hard standing. The existing visual impact of these buildings is material in the assessment of the visual impact of the proposed residential dwellings. The proposal will result in a substantial change to the existing character of the site. However, the scale, form and design of the proposed dwellings are considered to harmonise with the rural character of the surrounding area, and the built form would be well contained within the centre of the site. The inspector found the impact on the countryside would be acceptable on the previous identical scheme. Impact on coalescence, the proposal would replace existing built form on a previously developed site, and would result in a reduction in built area and volume, and thus improve the overall open appearance of the site. Residential amenity, noting that the position of residential development would retain suitable distances to neighbouring properties, and whilst the proposed residential development would be visible from these neighbouring properties, it is not considered to result in material harm, and would result in an acceptable form of development, taking into account the surroundings. Again, the inspector considered on the previous identical scheme that the impact on residential amenity was acceptable, and did not raise any concerns. The provision of amenity and place space, noting that appropriate amenity space has been provided, and again, the inspector raised no objection on this issue. Finally, members are reminded that the scheme is identical to the previous scheme that was refused by the appeal inspector. This scheme was refused as the legal agreement did not secure appropriate mitigation for the impact on the SPA. This appeal decision is a material consideration of considerable weight, and should therefore be given due consideration. Whilst the policy position has changed, as the referendum on the neighbourhood plan has taken place, and the council must now proceed to make this neighbourhood plan, it is of relevance that the inspector found no conflict between the previous identical scheme and the appeal decision, with the exception of policy FMP12, which relates to potential adverse impacts on the SPA. He specifically refers to the proposal complying with policies FMP1 and FMP10 in paragraph 15 of the appeal decision, and he also states that there will be no conflict with policies relating to ecology and infrastructure in paragraph 28 of the appeal decision. The recommendation is for approval, as set out on the update report. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Louise. This item is subject to public speaking, and I understand that all the speakers have had the procedure explained, so could I introduce the objector? First of all, Max Lyons, please, to come forward to the microphone here. Evening, Mr Lyons, you have four minutes from when you start speaking, so you, yes, you may do what you like first, you have four minutes from when you press that big button, start speaking.
My name is Max Lyons, and I've been asked to speak for the residents of Old Park Lane in objection to this application. I am an architect, chairman of Lyons Lee Manhor Architects and Planners, member of the Old Park Lane Residents' Association, chairman of the Castle Street Residents' Association, ex-chairman of the Farnham Society, trustee of the Farnham Institute, trustee of Lord Mayor of Lourdes and fellow of the Royal Society of Arts. Amongst other things, I designed the Lion and Lamb in Farnham, and other local buildings. We object to this application on three counts: one, the effect on the neighbourhood plan; two, the effect on the old park itself; and three, the effect on Old Park Lane. Firstly, the neighbourhood plan, approving this application would make a mockery, it's a bit of a strong word, of the neighbourhood plan, which was voted through last week. It is in complete contravention of that plan, which has taken years of hard work and consultation. Secondly, the old park, and the old park is very important, there've been books written about it, this is one by Pat Heather. This application would cause great damage to the old park. Farnham Castle is one of the most historic castles in Britain, and it had two parks, the Great Park and the Little Park. The Little Park is now called Farnham Park, the Great Park is now called the Old Park, and it's 700 acres of land, and this application is slap-bang in the middle of it. The Great Park is massively important to the history of Farnham and to England. The kings and queens of England hunted there from 1100 to 1700. It had a 10-foot oak palisade fence around it, and a moat around it, and is still 98% undeveloped. There are badgers, deer, field mice, newts and lots of rare plants. We owe it to future generations not to allow any development in this very special 700 acres. Lastly, the effect on Old Park Lane. Old Park Lane is a very important and historic route. It is the only bit of St Switherne's Way in Surrey. It is part of the prehistoric Harrow Way, which runs from Dover to the West Country. It is only eight feet wide, and is rough gravel, there is no right-of-way for vehicles. It is absolutely only a bridleway, and can only be maintained up to a level suitable for horses and pedestrians. It's privately owned, and cannot be widened, altered or passing bays added. This application cannot be implemented, as it would require between 6,000 and 7,000 trips of 40-tonne lorries just to prepare the site, before development has started. These figures come from professional highway consultants to the Residents' Association. This amount of traffic would seriously damage the bridleway, and the legislation will not allow the extensive repairs that would become necessary. So all in all, the park and the bridleways are home to wildlife, walkers and horse riders, and we need to protect it. As time passes, the protection of this historic area is only going to strengthen. I sincerely request this application is refused. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Lyons. I may introduce now, please, the supporter, Karen Clark, if she'd like to come forward to speak. And, good evening, exactly the same rules, four minutes from when you press the big button and start to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, members. This scheme is identical in every respect to that previously refused and determined at appeal in January of this year. The inspector assessed the proposal against current and emerging policy, including the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan. The recent referendum on the neighbourhood plan does not impact on the appeal decision, which explicitly states the development is compliant with it. Indeed, the scheme was found policy-compliant in every respect, apart from a clause within the legal agreement that secures money for the provision as well as enhancement of sang land. It was the offering of money for the provision of sang, rather than it being restricted to its enhancement, that led to the appeal being dismissed. The findings of this appeal decision carry considerable weight in planning law, and the principle of the development at this site has been established. The legal agreement has been redrafted to address the conclusions of the appeal decision, and complies with council's adopted SPA mitigation strategy and Sill regulations. As such, the sole reason for dismissing the appeal four months ago has been fully addressed. There are no outstanding planning reasons to refuse permission. In planning law, the conclusions of this very recent appeal decision for exactly the same development on exactly the same site, carry substantial weight in the determination of the application before you. To conclude otherwise, we'd leave the council open to challenge and costs. We acknowledge that some local residents continue to actively oppose the scheme, and have raised concern about the anticipated number of HGV movements generated during site clearance and remediation. The assumptions relied upon to generate the headline numbers cannot be relied upon, as set out in a detailed response on this matter. Further, we should be reminded that site clearance and the remediation of contaminated land have always been an integral part of this proposal, as has the use of Old Park Lane, the bridleway, during these phases of development. This was and is clearly set out in the supporting documentation, and comprised part of the details considered at appeal. Neither this council nor the inspector raised this as a reason for refusal. An inspector is required to consider all documentation and representations made to them by all parties during the appeal process. Representations expressing the very same concerns as those recently raised by the Residents' Association and others, form part of the evidence before the inspector. The inspector did not offer support or agree with these objections. We further note that our expert witness, Surrey County Council, and indeed the author of the report prepared on behalf of the Residents' Association, concludes that appropriate mitigation can be secured by measures which are outlined by way of condition and in the legal agreement. These conditions are embodied within the recommendation to approve. There is no case in law to impact on the conclusions of the appeal inspector. There are no outstanding planning reasons to refuse planning permission. This application is not a mechanism to overturn the inspector's decision. We realise the appeal decision may have been disappointing for some, but the scheme has been properly tested and found compliant with adopted and emerging policy. Planning law determines this carries substantial weight. These views in the legal position are fully endorsed by officers of this council, legal advisers and the county council. In implementing planning policy and acting in accordance with planning law, planning permission must be granted for this scheme without delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Clark. John Williamson, the ward member for this area, also wishes to speak, and you, being the ward member, have two bites of the cherry, you have four minutes to speak now, and then at the end of the meeting, I will ask you again if you'd like another four minutes to comment on what you've heard, so.
Thanks very much, John. I didn't realise I got two goes at it, excellent. Maybe I'll just say twice. I'd like to start by thanking Max I'd like to start by thanking Max for his words because it's freed me up to perhaps say some other things. Let me tell a little story. I like telling stories. A few weeks ago, I took my dog for an early morning walk up the bridleway. Coming in the opposite direction was a 20-tonne motorway construction lorry filling the total width of the track. Now, I expected him to slow down as he approached me, I had my dog, and as he slowed down, I expected to get onto the side, but he didn't slow down. He carried on, he got within about 10 yards, and I realised he was on his mobile phone, totally oblivious to me, and I had to dive into the ditch, pull the dog, and he carried on. Anyway, person that I am, I got up early again the next day, went out without the dog, and flagged the chap down. Asked him who he was delivering his stuff to so early in the morning. He said, "Oh, sorry, mate, I'm not delivering, I've got permission to park my HGV up at the livery from the owner." So, this creates a number of issues. I mean, obviously, the safety issue, you know, large trucks on a single track is not ideal for anyone's point of view. But more importantly, I think, if I had any confidence, because I checked with Waverley, found out later that in fact there were four investigations for...
Excuse me, I'm going to stop you there, councillor Williamson. Can we concentrate solely, please, on the planning application, otherwise we'll have to go into an exempt. If you wish to go into exempt, we can do so, but I would rather carry out a planning meeting on the planning application in front of us in the public domain.
I appreciate that, chairman, and I wasn't going to go into any details at all, other than to say...
I think you should say no more on that unless we go into exempt. So either you leave that completely, we go into exempt, and you just concentrate on the planning application, and we stay in public. That's your choice, councillor Williamson.
Okay, I'll carry on. I've read with interest the recent reports which have come out on traffic, on the number of HGVs. The various consultants have said 3,600, 6,500, or if the further five hectares of the old brickwork has found to be contamination there, it could be anything up to 18,000 HGVs that go along that lane. The reality is, it doesn't really matter. It doesn't matter, none of these numbers are going to be correct, and you won't know until the end. But what we do know, what is absolutely certain for sure, is the bridleway is not structurally sound enough to take any of those vehicles. Surrey have confirmed that there will need to be, that work will need to be undertaken before this rectification takes place, this decontamination work starts, and to ensure that it's, that it can carry the predicted truck levels. In addition, they've also said that additional protection will have to be undertaken to ensure the essential services are adequately protected. Incidentally, one of Farnham's major water supplies goes down that track. It's in a plastic pipe, and it's close to the surface, and it feeds... And the way to overcome and to correct that...
Can you make this your last sentence, please? You've got a chance to come back, as you know.
I will come back, and I'll come back on the neighbourhood plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williamson. Can I open this up to members then? Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, chairman. I think I should open on this for us because I'm another ward councillor for this area. We are told here that there are a number of issues. I appreciate the... There's been quite a flurry over the past 10 days or so of documentation in respect of the integrity and potential treatment of the access along Old Park Lane, and I will come to that in a minute. But the point, I think, which officers are saying to us is the only thing which we can really consider is that which was, is still left undecided from the inspector's decision, and that's in respect of the approach to the Thames Basin Heats and the requirement for mitigation for the incombination effect on the Thames Basin Heats and the protected species on that habitat. Now, I note on page 58 of the report, there's a comment on there which says that the principle of development has been established. We've been through this before. I'm absolutely certain, and you're welcome to check the webcast if you wish, from the 10th of April meeting of the Joint Planning Committee that I asked, and it was confirmed by a legal adviser, that the principle of environmental law, which is called the catch-all principle, does apply to all stages of any planning application or further applications in respect of habitats, as well as EIA. This isn't EIA, I'm not going to refer to EIA in this, but in respect of habitats, it is not possible to say that the principle of this development has been established because that cannot be the case. There is always the requirement of Regulation 9.5 of the habitats regulations, which state that we, as the decision-makers, as the competence authority, must have regard to the impact on the protected habitat in all of our decision-making, and that includes tonight. And so I refer, as always, I mean, I do think, we all know of the applicant, in this case, there's considerable local interest, and we have to show consistency, and you know that I am consistent in this regard. I again refer to MPPF 2012, paragraph 113, footnote 24, that's the statutory instrument, the law which is in circular 06/2005, and specifically in paragraphs 13 to 28, which require convincing, objective evidence that, in this case effectively, the mitigation is effective. I did some five or six weeks ago in respect of another application, and that was specifically Waven Engineering over in Elstet.
Can I just get you back on to this one? You do have a tendency to bring the same argument over and over again, which is fine if it's something you feel strongly about, but can you just concentrate, please, on the application in front of you and not bring in everything else? We don't have time.
Absolutely, chairman. This is entirely relevant because, as I was saying, I sent out, because I do get complaints sometimes from other members that these are things I should have brought up in advance of the meeting. And I was saying that in order to prevent any statements like that, that I did send to all members a document, it was a single-page document with relevant extracts and links to the relevant legal constraints, which is habitats articles 6.3 and 6.4, and also paragraphs 2021 of the, of circular 06, the statutory...
Councillor Hyman, I'm going to stop you again. You're entitled to send us anything you like, and we're entitled to read it and make up our own minds on what you send us. We are looking at this application, will you please concentrate on this application, and which aspects of this application you either agree with or disagree with? I really don't want to spend every Western area having the same lecture from you. It really isn't fair on the members. I can ask all the members if they wish just to move on. Now, I'll give you another moment or two to finish what you're going to say, but please, will you get back on to this application?
Chairman, the law, as I say, Regulation 9.5 requires that we address this, so I don't think that, quite frankly, that we should be avoiding talking about it, but I will quickly run through what the issues are. They say the law requires convincing, objective evidence, and you're recording...
Look, we know what it says, Mr Hyman. Apart from the fact that we knew before you came on, we've certainly had it often enough from you. I'm going to ask the committee here if they wish, like me, to move on, because I really am not prepared to sit here the whole time and listen to this time and time again. Can I see a show of hands, please, if any of the committee would like us to move on from this item? Thank you. Unless you're going to say something relevant to this, we're going to move on. Have you got something relevant to this actual application, please? And don't please quote law at me all the time, we've had enough.
I could quote the probity and planning document we're all meant to have read before we come into these meetings, Madam Chairman, but the law does say that we're meant to consider it, and that members have absolutely no right to decide that we can't. That is not a decision that they have any authority to make. Let me refer, if I can, to where the officers are coming from. They're stating that CIL Regulations 122 and 123 are now complied with. If I refer you to CIL 122, the third point states that the planning obligations must be fairly and reasonably related to the development in front of us. Now, that is based on an eight hectare per thousand, I mean, the amount of money that the developer is paying supposedly for this mitigation to satisfy CIL 122 is based on eight hectare per thousand population increase, and this development intends to contribute to the Farnham Park sang at that rate. But Natural England has no evidence, as far as I know, that that eight hectares per thousand should be...
I'm going to stop you again here. Let's refer, as we always do at every meeting, back to the officers who will reassure us. The fact that you will not take the officers' reassurance is not a case, please, for delaying every single application and extending every single Western meeting. So could I ask, please, for one of the officers to reassure the rest of the committee that our decision-making is fair? Could you make sure you...
Thank you, chairman. Perhaps I can help on this. Put very simply, members, clearly, your policy in relation to impact on the SPA is well-known to you. You have an agreed avoidance strategy which has been agreed by Natural England. It is the basis of a sound policy in which you are entitled to seek comfort that your development within the five-kilometre buffer zone will satisfactorily avoid a likely significant effect on the SPA, and I would urge you to accept that in relation to that approach, you can be satisfied that your approach is lawful and sound, and I hope that advice will help cover off the issue in general. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I'm going to move on now to another councillor. I think it's about time somebody else had a say on this. Councillor Potts.
Thank you, chairman. If I can move slightly differently in terms of the subject, to me, there have been two significant changes since we last heard this application, and Mr Lyons spoke very eloquently earlier, but one is the Farnham neighbourhood plan. This is a proposal for nine dwellings. Now, we're not saying that the Farnham neighbourhood plan means that we're stopping anything else in the whole of Farnham being built, however, nine dwellings, especially in this particular area, is significant. There was a resounding majority in favour of that neighbourhood plan last week, and this is not an identified site. So we do need, as the officers stated earlier, that does actually have a significant material bearing. It certainly does as far as I see it. Secondly, there is the report, and I haven't got all of the report here, but there have been some parts drawn from this report on the bridleway. Now, I don't know the bridleway that well, because, to be frank with you, I try not to go up there because the road is so terrible. You know, if you want to wreck your car, that's the quickest way to really do so. It's not a suitable, I mean, it's called a bridleway, I don't know what I would call it, but looking at these additional suggestions that have come in, in terms of the conditions on the update, on pages four and five of the sheets, quite frankly, they're not robust at all. I really don't see that those suggestions in any way come close to mitigating the impact should this proposal go ahead. So as far as I, and what I'm also not quite clear on, there's been mention this evening about the fact that we don't have a five-year housing supply, but can somebody please clarify for me as well, just so I'm absolutely correct here? I understood, or it was, that if we were in a situation where the Farnham neighbourhood plan came into play, that actually it was only a three-year housing supply that was required. So again, could someone help clarify that for me, please?
Yes, and could you perhaps just, while you're at it, touch on the full weight now of the neighbourhood plan and the fact it's been made, because obviously the circumstances have changed. Not, sorry, not made, gone through the referendum, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, just jumping ahead. But while you're answering that, could you sort of come up with a complete picture of the changes now that the neighbourhood plan has passed at referendum and the three-year housing land supply?
Okay. First of all, in relation to the Farnham neighbourhood plan, it has been, gone to referendum, and the public have voted in favour of it, and therefore we can give substantial weight to it. We cannot give full weight to the plan until it is made or adopted, so that hasn't taken place yet, so we cannot give full weight to that. Furthermore, in relation to housing land supply, the three-year housing land supply comes into play again once the plan has been made or adopted, which again, has not taken place yet. Thank you.
Elizabeth, did you wish to add something? You look so...
Chairman, I'm happy with that response, thank you.
Right, members, anybody else wish to comment on this application? Councillor Hargreaves? Oh, sorry, got somebody else. Hargreaves? But, sorry, Councillor Hargreaves, we're getting confused here.
Oh dear. I actually just want to make one of my sweeping statements. The neighbourhood plan, we have been putting this together with the residents of Farnham for nearly five years, if not more. Now we've got the plan, it's been passed by the inspector, and it needs to be backed by Waverley. Here we have an application that is completely against the Farnham plan, and are you going to tell we are going to fall at the first fence and let this through when the neighbourhood plan distinctly says it is not acceptable? Why have we been spending all these years putting together a plan that we're not going to use? Thank you, Madam Mo.
Thank you, Councillor Hargreaves. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Councillor... Oh, right, MacLeod, and then Fraser. Sorry, Councillor MacLeod.
Sorry, first of all, I'd just like to say I very much support Councillor Hargreaves' comments. Just a couple of simple points, actually. The response from Surrey Highways to the report from the commission by the residents spoke about it being the worst-case scenario in relation to a particular point. I'd just like to point that worst-case scenarios can occur, actually. What we need to know is what the actual scenario, but we could well have the worst-case scenario. Second, sort of brief question, if I may, that I think it was said that the bridleway is privately owned and there's no right-of-way. It may be that that's not a planning consideration, but if I could just ask the officers, if the owner of the land didn't want this to happen, could the owner of the land stop it actually happening?
Is there anyone answering that for us?
It's a public bridleway, so anyone can go up the bridleway.
Did you have anything else, Councillor MacLeod? Right, Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Let's start with that last statement first. I live next to a bridleway. It has rights-of-way on foot and horseback, but only private properties bordering that bridleway have permitted use of vehicles on it. Other vehicles have no right-of-way on that bridleway. Now, that's the legal situation that I have lived with for 40 years, nearly 40 years, and I suspect that Old Park Lane is a similar situation. Push came to shove, I do believe whoever has the rights over that bridleway will be able to stop so many thousand lorries serving the construction of this new site. When the inspector looked at this... When the inspector looked at this proposal, which has not changed, he was comparing it with our neighbourhood plan in draft and emerging, and gave it some weight, though not significant. It then passed the inspector, I believe, and it gained significant weight, has now passed the referendum by about, correct me if I'm wrong, about eighty-eight per cent of people responded favourably. And now it may be given considerable weight. I think, in the light of that, and the additional information that's available, it should receive a different consideration by an inspector. I do, I have read, and I do believe, that we are satisfied under the neighbourhood plan with a three-year availability of building land, and that we do have. So we don't need to refer any more to the non-compliance with the five-year availability. In my previous incarnation as a structural and highway engineer, it was my duty on occasions to make engineering assessments from a simple walk-through, and that I have done. This bridleway will not take twenty-tonne vehicles in any quantity, and the environmental pollution control, the pollution report I've looked at, gives me the impression that we're going to need at least six thousand twenty tonnes taking contaminated soil waste out from Noel Farm. It doesn't stop there. When these vehicles emerge from Old Park Lane, they have to turn either through Farnham Town Centre or up through Upper Hale, and we don't particularly want that. But that, of course, is not a planning consideration. When it comes to the number of horses in the vicinity, I think this has been very inadequately covered. I'm told there are sixty horses stabled in the vicinity of Old Park, sixty, and they use that bridleway every day, and they're going to have to contend with six thousand twenty-tonne lorries, followed by the construction traffic, followed by the additional cars and service vehicles for doubling the number of habitable residences along there, from present nine or ten to probably nineteen or twenty. We've covered the bridleway and the footpath. One other aspect of this design, and I brought it up last time, and I'll do it again, there's been an attempt to adjust the ridgelines of the barm houses to match the ridgeline of the existing houses adjacent to the east. To achieve this, the designers have taken out the contaminated soil and taken them away, but they have not brought back an equivalent quantity of fill. They've left the design largely in a saucer, in a dish, and this dish lays on London clay immediately to the south of the gravel capping of Caesar's Camp and Hungry Hill and Sandy Hill. Lots of groundwater, spring water, filters down through the gravel, onto the clay, and flows across the site. At the moment, it's taking the leachate from the pollution into the stream, and I believe it then will go down through the farm to Claypit Wood and into the River Way. By building these houses in this dish, we will be collecting water, and I wonder whether the flood aspects have been adequately covered for that point. And it also occurs to me that there is a protected water catchment immediately to the east, in the farmland to the east, where a stream runs through meadows and goes down a sinkhole, a swallowhole, into the chalk, which is an Artesian source of water. I believe that this, moving this contamination away, is one way of removing the nuisance of it, but I do not think that this is the correct way. Another approach will be to seal it, to bund it and to cap it, and not to build upon it. This will be a cheaper operation to undertake, but it will have no means of funding without building, which is a pity. But that, I think, will be a far safer way of dealing with the pollution than digging it up and trucking it past other people's doors. I concur with everything that's been said by those who have leapt at the defence of our neighbourhood plan. I could not have put it more eloquently had I tried. And also, the area of the old park, the protection that's needed there, and the areas of high landscape value and great landscape value that lay immediately to the east. But these have all been considered by an inspector previously and dismissed. So if one inspector in Bristol can dismiss five years of work on a neighbourhood plan, then I think we are all wasting our time. This should be resisted with every means we have. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Fraser. We'll ask the officers to come back altogether, if that's all right with you, with all the points, and get them ready. Councillor Hammond, you wish to come back?
Yes, Chairman, I will move on to a different issue if we're not able to address the one that we're meant to be addressing. If I can turn you to page four of the update sheet, please, that you've got in front of you, where we've got a very handy summary of the situation that we've found over the past fortnight, where previously discussed issues regarding the bridleway have come back again in far greater detail. And here it states, under Officer Comment, that it is clear that the matter of traffic generation associated with the construction process was fully considered as part of the previous application. Well, I can't, actually, for myself, from the documents I've got in front of me and online, I can't see how it can have been, because the indicative levels are not known, that's in condition three to set them, so obviously we can't know how much traffic generation there would have been. And if we look at condition eight G at the bottom of that page, details of the maximum number of two-way HGV movements per day are placed under a condition. So unless we have the details of those, of the number of HGV movements, unless we have the details of the indicative levels, it can't possibly be clear that the matter of traffic generation associated with the construction process, blah blah, was fully considered. And then I move on to the next one, Chairman. It is clear, it states, that from the County Highway Authority, the report represents a worst-case scenario. Well, I've read the reports, that doesn't appear to be true, the report does not include demolition and construction, or likely further landfill effect, they haven't been included in the estimates, which are claimed to be a worst-case scenario. As Councillor MacLeod says, we need to know the actual scenario, and I'm very concerned that we're being told this isn't something that we should decide, this is something that has to be left to the officers for later, and I think that's entirely unsatisfactory. So, there's statements here that summarise things for me, saying it's absolutely clear, and then obviously that can't be true repeatedly. It continues, an amendment to condition five is recommended to capture the additional recommendations of the County Highway Authority. I see that as, to get around, our better judgement, I really can't see how that is justified. Finally, it ends, condition three, which requires submission of the existing and proposed site levels, will enable some control over the amount of material that would require importing or removals. This is completely unknown, we've got no idea whatsoever what the effects would be.
Right, we'll take that, we'll ask the officers to come back and reassure us on that at the same time. Do you have any other points?
Yes, I did, but I'm not going to spend time on them because, Councillor Potts and your good self, in respect of, you know, the way to be applied to the, the substantial way to be applied to the neighbourhood plan now, I agree with Councillor, substantial, I think it was Louise told us, that Councillor Potts is, in respect of this site not being identified in the neighbourhood plan, absolutely agree, and Councillor Hargreaves spoke very well, I absolutely agree with those. I, in view of the fact that we do not have, we're not satisfying, we don't have the evidence to satisfy CIL 122, and we do not have the evidence necessary, these statements are simply not true, I don't think I can vote in favour of this, Chairman. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Hammond. Councillor Hill?
Yes, Chairman, we're all encouraged to take our, make our own opinions in this, and I have to say that I'm actually going to come out and say that I'm in favour of the application for a number of reasons. I think that recalling the site visit that we did, that the existing buildings are singularly unattractive. I really like the proposed application, I think the buildings are very sympathetic with the surroundings, infinitely better than the ones that are there at the moment. I agree with the officer's recommendation, because the inspector came out really pretty much in favour of the whole application. I think that as far as the traffic is concerned, it really can't be beyond the ability of a contractor to manage the traffic in some way, and we should add perhaps a very big condition to this about traffic management. I think it's a shame about the neighbourhood plan, but I, of course, but in this instance, but, you know, we have been told that that doesn't preclude any other development anywhere else, and in this particular instance, I'm really going to vote in favour of it.
Right, Councillor Nabeel?
First, Mr Chairman, I would like to apologise for my dress code, it was a big confusion, and I would like to second what Stephen has said. The traffic could be controlled by the council and us. I think my fellow constables, who I support and say that they have a little bit exaggerated the traffic control, but as my fellow constables, they have their opinion and I have my opinion regarding it, and I would go with Stephen Hill to second it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Nabeel. Shall I take Councillor Wilson before the officers?
I can get the answers too.
Right, can I have, I think, a sort of wash-up from the officers first? Have you got a new point, Councillor Fraser? A new one, not newish?
It's newish, I regret to say, but it's very quick, so I beg your indulgence. When it comes to the management of the traffic, it's not the management we're particularly worried about, it's the construction of the road. The road will not take the number of standard axles necessary to construct the place, let alone remove the pollution. It will need to be rebuilt entirely in width and depth. It will cease to be a bridleway, it will become a highway. These houses, there's nine of them, they've got thirty-five persons, if you count one person per bed, you can't guarantee that, of course, but if there's thirty-five persons, there is twenty-eight car spaces, you can guarantee those thirty-five persons will use those twenty-eight car spaces. That's twenty-eight two-way additional car movements on that road, on that bridleway, every day. You can almost bet your bottom dollar that's what will happen. So when the thing is finished and built, it's still this tremendous increase in traffic.
Thank you, Councillor Fraser, I'll take your word that that was newish. We've had a few points raised, and I'm sure the officers would like to come back on some of them, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, I'll cover off a few of the points, and Louise will pick up on the point around contamination of vehicle movements at the end. Completely understand the sort of conflict and the position that's changed with the neighbourhood plan and the sort of comments that are arising out of that, but just for clarification, just because the site's not allocated, that does not rule out development. If there was a specific policy restricting or protecting the existing use and saying that use must stay there, and we had a specific restrictive policy on that grounds, we would be in a different position, saying it must be retained as that because, for whatever reason, it's appropriate in that location, or that enhances the setting. We don't have a specific policy that protects the current use. It is a brownfield site, and we've got a case here where, overall, the scale of development is less than that is on-site. In terms of the weight to the neighbourhood plan, the inspector, of course, did give limited weight at the time of the appeal, however, the inspector then moved on to consider those policies and found the scheme to comply with the requirements of those policies, going through what the specific things. So whilst he gave limited weight, or she gave limited weight at the time, it was found to comply. If it was a different position where the inspector said it didn't comply, and limited weight, and therefore dismissed, or supported refusal on those grounds, again, it would be a different story, but the conclusions were that the scheme, as presented now and as presented before, would comply with those policies that we've highlighted that are relevant to that area. So I just think it's important to note that going forward, it doesn't preclude any development. In terms of the bridleway, just to confirm, that is a public highway, and it is a highway. I draw the attention to the comments from county rights-of-way officers, who, of course, manage that and are the appropriate authority in advising on matters that affect that, and they find it to be acceptable, subject to the conditions and appropriate improvement, which is secured by a legal agreement. I'd also, oh, sorry, on page fifty, apologies, I didn't give you the page number, on page fifty-four of your agenda, I'd also refer you to paragraph seventeen of the appeal inspector's decision, apologies, I'll get the page number again, I haven't helped you here, on page ninety-eight, which is specific in stating, however, the development would result in a reduction of vehicle trips to and from the site in comparison to the present livery use. Such development would not increase the use of the bridleway. So I think that's quite clear in what the inspector's said, that it feels that that wouldn't harm that point. There's also the opportunity to temporarily divert the bridleway, if that is required, that's not saying it's essential to do, but there is that opportunity to deal with very much that temporary construction phase, which is, development often results in even a closing up or temporary closing up of a bridleway along those lines. Also, concern's been raised about the construction process in general. This is a temporary matter, the purpose of the construction management plan is to deal specifically with this issue, and it's not appropriate to refuse an application if a condition can appropriately deal with that. And again, we can, we can take reference again from National Planning Guidance, which is clear in saying refusing planning permission on a planning ground capable of being dealt with by a condition would be inappropriate and would risk the council an award of costs, whereas concluded that suitable conditions would enable the proposed development to go ahead, and that is the conclusion of the inspector last time. So the position on the bridleway does not change, in our view, to that inspector found to be appropriate and that which officers have put forward. In terms of flood risk, that was also mentioned, again, on pages fifty-four of your agenda, the Leeds Local Flood Authority is satisfied on that point. There's a comment around the contamination and the impact on water quality, of course, the removal of contamination from the site will reduce the risk of impact and infiltration into the water table, water quality, so that's also an important point to take. I'll just hand over to Louise now, who'll just pick up on the point regarding contamination. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, the County Highway Authority have confirmed that the vehicle movements in the highway report we've received from the Residents' Association is a worst-case scenario. The developer has also confirmed that is the case. The reason it's a worst-case scenario is that it assumes that all the contaminated land would be removed from the site, remediated, and then new soil effectively brought back into the site. We have consulted our expert environmental health officer, who obviously is an expert in these matters, and she has advised it is highly unlikely that that is the way that the site would be remediated. That is a very costly and inefficient way of remediating the land, and it's much more cost-effective to remediate the soil on-site itself, which would result in a minimal amount of soil being removed. So the actual number of vehicle movements in the highway report put forward by the Residents' Association is highly unlikely. Full details of the remediation would be secured by a condition which is an established and appropriate way of dealing with contaminated land, and it would not be appropriate to refuse an application on that basis, because we would want to see... refuse an application on that basis, because we would want to see the remediation of contaminated land encouraged. And there were also some comments on the remediation of land outside of the application site. We would only be able to require the applicant to remediate the contaminated land within the site, in order to ensure contaminants don't come through into the site, there would be gas protection measures around the site. But I hope that gives members some comfort.
Thank you Louise, I gather Elizabeth would also like to add?
Very briefly, thank you, thank you chairman, I just wanted to add just a few final words, members, that we, as officers, we do realise that this is a very sensitive matter and a site and a development that's had a lot of public interest, and there's obviously been a lot of discussion about the various issues again this evening. But I would urge you to bear in mind, as we said at the beginning of the presentation, that the decision-making framework first and foremost is the development plan, taking into account the emerging plans and the weight to be attached to them. The neighbourhood plan doesn't have full weight yet, as we've discussed, and in fact, difficult a message as it is, the emerging neighbourhood plan does not preclude development in principle on this site, it is a matter of judgement as to whether or not it's acceptable. But first and foremost, it is the inspector's decision which needs to guide you, because most of those matters have already been thoroughly considered by the inspector and conclusions reached that the development is acceptable in those terms. The outstanding matter, as we said at the beginning, really was about impact on the SPA and the applicants have sought to rectify that. So I do feel bound to remind members that really does need to be in the forefront of your mind in coming to a conclusion in terms of a reasonable decision. Thank you very much chairman.
Thank you, I'm not going to take any more, other than to ask councillor Williamson to come back please, with a wash-up, we've heard from the officers.
Thanks very much chairman, let me start with the bridleway, because it did seem some, a little confusion. It is a privately owned public bridleway and footpath, that's absolutely clear. The mitigation suggested by Surrey County Council, i.e. the diversion of that bridleway whilst the removal of the material takes place and the 3,600 or 6,500 trucks move up and down it, are impossible. I mean, it cannot be diverted unless of course there was a compulsory purchase, because the owners of the land on either side are not prepared to give space. And that also applies to the safety measures which have been suggested by Surrey to put laybys in, or as they call them, safe havens. So the two mitigation methods are impossible without compulsory purchase. There's a whole series of things, and I agree with many of the things that the members have mentioned tonight. A couple of things which haven't been mentioned, I mean, it was mentioned last time, but I don't believe the site is at all sustainable. I can't believe that nine families living a few yards from a sheep farm is not going to detrimentally affect the farmer's livelihood and is here tonight. The, but I suppose the major thing, the major thing is that, how can we, I can't see how the views of 10,000 residents of Farnham can be ignored. On Thursday, it was Thursday, it seems a long time ago, Thursday last week, getting on for 90% of the people who voted agreed that the neighbourhood plan was to be used by Wavely Berry Council in determining planning applications, and tonight, this committee has the first opportunity to endorse by supporting the policy in the plan specifically developed to protect the Old Park from inappropriate development. FMP10, specifically developed to protect it from inappropriate development. I've absolutely listened with interest to the officers' comments and the weight that is placed on the neighbourhood plan. But if, absolutely no other reason, if there was, you know, if the lane was a motorway, if the farm wasn't there, if all those things didn't exist, the very fact of the neighbourhood plan and the status that it's got, and the fact that 10,000 people voted for it, is not enough of a reason to reject this application, I don't know what is. To do anything else would be an absolute betrayal of the people of Farnham and the trust that they have put in this committee. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Williamson, so unless the officers have any last final plea, can we move straight to the recommendation please, which is on the update sheet? The recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to the completion of a section 106 agreement to secure upgrade works to the public bridleway, SUDS management plan, open space management plan and SPA contributions by the 29th of June 2017, and subject to conditions 1 to 4 and 6 to 21 in the agenda report, and the amended condition 5 as set out on this update sheet, and the informatives 1 to 8 also in the agenda report. Can I see all those in favour of the recommendation to grant? Do you please show?
One, two, three.
May I see all those against please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Abstentions, anyone abstaining? Right, so we have rejected the recommendation to grant, which means that we now need another recommendation. Do I have another recommendation please? Councillor Hyman?
Yes, indeed, that we refuse on grounds that the neighbourhood plan now takes priority, and that, I'm sure our officers can give us far better wording than that, but the protection which Farnham now has in the neighbourhood plan needs to be exerted, and that has not had the same weight previously, and we now wish that weight to be applied. In addition, regulation 122 of CIL is not satisfied because the required evidence is not fairly, for it to be fairly and reasonably rated is not provided, and the standard SPA... We were told, madam chairman, by Mrs Sims, that the one issue that we must consider is the impact on the SPA, and I'm slightly surprised that we're not allowed to, because we've been told we must and that we're not allowed to, but nevertheless...
I don't think that's quite true, Miss Hyman. Right, we've got one reason that certainly is to do with the strength of the neighbourhood plan, is there any other matter that any councillor wishes to add to strengthen our refusal? Because as Mrs Sims says, it is a very difficult one, but we have to put in a strong refusal. And obviously the neighbourhood plan is our strongest refusal, as councillor Hargreaves said, it's been five years in the making, it's got the support of the people, but we have to make that strong case. And we also have to just point out, the previous inspector was looking at a very junior neighbourhood plan, as it were, not that we're accusing the inspector of ignoring the plan, that just that the plan has moved on. So we'll need advice from the officers, councillor Fraser, you wish to speak?
Just two small items that should be, I think, included, might add more weight. One is the viability of the equestrian businesses that operate, 60 horses, which will be emerging onto this highway, and the continuing viability of the farm, Park Farm, which is immediately adjacent to the applicant's site.
I'm just going to start there, councillor Fraser, because I'm not quite sure that we're looking at planning matters there. I think we just need a bit of help from the officers, but one thing I didn't do was get a second of it, councillor Hyman, are you willing to second councillor Hyman, councillor Fraser? Right, can I have a word from the officers please, because we know, I think, why we're turning this down, and I need to know what the officers can do please, what advice they can offer, other than the advice they've already given us?
Thank you chairman, yeah, so listen to that point, what I think we need to explicitly set out is where there's, where members think there is specific harm. They said wait to the neighbourhood plan, which is fine, that's one point, because that has changed, but we need to specifically set out which policies within the neighbourhood plan we think that there's a direct conflict with, and specifically identify why this scheme as presented is now materially more harmful than when the inspector concluded on it last time. So we do need a bit of guidance on where members feel those specific policies conflict, and then we can look to draft the reasons for refusal. But until we've got that steer, other than saying wait to the neighbourhood plan, because that's not a reason for refusal, we know how much weight we're giving to that neighbourhood plan now, we now need to have a steer from councillors, which specific policies we want us to put into wording for that reason for refusal. So I'm sorry chairman, I can't give you too much more as yet, but we'll try if that can happen.
Right, thank you. I mean, I think the point I presume that councillors were making is that when the inspector was looking at the plan, it hadn't been out to full consultation, I mean, in the sense that it hadn't gone through, the inspector had not come up with his decision. So what he was looking at was a draft plan that hadn't gone through as many processes as it's now gone through, and we need to know when we're looking at policy FMP10 in particular, whether its status has increased because of the inspector's report, the examiner's report of the neighbourhood plan in November and what he produced in January, which was not available to the previous inspector, and also to the fact that the policy has now been endorsed by an electorate in Farnham.
Chairman, you quoted FMP10, perhaps it's helpful, if Peter were to read that policy out, to remind members of the exact wording, and on the basis of that, to identify the conflict that you see the proposal triggers in relation to that, and we can attempt to construct a reason for refusal around the proposal is in conflict with that policy in terms of, and then we'll attach a line below it to say, in comparison with the inspector's report, the plan has now gained more weight for planning purposes, and that's probably as strong as it can get, I'm afraid. So if I could, chairman, with your indulgence, invite Peter to read the policy out, that members could identify how the proposal conflicts with it. Thank you chairman.
Yes, that's fine, thanks Peter.
Thank you chairman, yes, so FMP10, which is entitled Protect, Protect and Enhance the Countryside, it states that outside the built-up area boundary as defined on map A, which is earlier on in the plan, priority will be given to protecting the countryside from inappropriate development. There's a number of criteria, I'll just run through them, because I think there's a number that won't be relevant, and hopefully we can move on from those. A relates to other policies within the plan, FMP16, 17 and 20, which deal largely with employment provision, allocation and extension to residential properties. So hopefully I can move on, I don't think that's the one we're pursuing. B relates to protection of the green belt, this site is not a green belt site. Criteria C, conserve and enhance the landscape and scenic beauty of the Surrey Hills A and B and its setting, including those areas of great landscape value under consideration for designation in the A and B. Members may note on point C there. Point D, retain the landscape character of and not have a detrimental impact on areas shown on map E as having high landscape value and sensitivity, and map F, Old Park, as having high landscape sensitivity and historic value. And map F specifically is referred to and covers this site, so, and point E relates to enhance the landscape value of the countryside, and where new planting is involved, use appropriate native species. That's the coverage, and I think probably where members are going are criteria D and E, and I'll seek guidance on that, but Daniel Lucas has just got a further point.
Yes, Chair, through you, you've got to bear in mind as well that the inspector's made findings of fact here, so not opinion, and he's made findings of fact, which in a way restrict your application of that policy, because he believes on a balance of probabilities that this particular issue has been contested, and he's made findings as per application of that policy. So he says at paragraph 14 of his decision, given the existing development on site, okay, the overall reduction in built form, and as the development reflects the nature of the location, the existing landscape character would be retained, which would preserve the setting of the heritage assets. That's a finding of fact, not opinion, because the matter was in dispute before him, it was being argued, it was a fact in issue, and he's made a finding on those arguments. Thank you.
Thank you, where are we going from here? We seem to have an argument that when the previous inspector considered the site in relation to the policies in the neighbourhood plan, they were at a very early stage, they are now at a stronger stage, but according to Dan, the inspector looked at our policies, and even though they were in draft form, studied them and thought that this application did not go against those policies. The difference, as far as I can see, is the point that other councillors have made, that this has now been out to full consultation through the basic conditions, through referendum, and therefore should be tested again. I don't know how we can put this politely, but I can understand completely where the committee is coming from, when you have just gone through all of this, you've just got the neighbourhood plan up to this stage. How can you just agree at this stage not to defend one of the policies that you feel is being overlooked in the plan? Correct me off, members, if I've got this wrong, is that not what you're saying? Yes, please councillor Hargreaves, help.
Can I just say something? I just have the impression it's officers' views versus our views. This is something really, really new. It's something you haven't had to consider before. You haven't had this sort of thing, neighbourhood plan, it does carry weight, we've got to somehow test it. If we spent five years doing it and we're wrong, isn't it about time we found out now, rather than later? I don't feel you're with us, am I, I'm, you know, we need your help, we need your help to put our plan, our views forward, in planning words, rather than my verbiage here.
Thank you councillor Hargreaves, Elizabeth, you wish to come back?
Chairman, I think it's really important that as officers we emphasise, we're certainly not seeking to undermine the neighbourhood plan, and we're certainly not unfamiliar with having to advise you as to the weight to be attached to plans at different stages. It's a very common part of the planning process, and of course, those of us like me, I'm afraid I've been in this job for too long, but we've had, I've been, I've lived with four local plans now, and over the years, they're all reaching different stages at different times, and it's been common planning practice for the longest time to advise our members as to what weight to be attached to plans at different stages. So in that, with respect, there's nothing new about advising you as to what weight we feel you should attach to the emerging neighbourhood plan. It's not undermining the value of the plan, it's a matter of fact in terms of proper planning decision-making, that at any point in its stage, you should be applying a certain amount of weight. And that's all we've tried to do this evening, to update you on that status, but it does come back to the fact that really what you're matching this against is the inspector's report, and the inspector took into account the neighbourhood plan, the only thing that has changed is that stage in the process. So what we're trying to do here is to allow you to, albeit, I have to say, we still disagree with the reproach, we accept the decision you've made, but we're trying to help you to get to the point whereby a judgement you formed before, that the inspector disagreed with, but you formed before, the development would be harmful to the character of the landscape and the character of the countryside, that that view you wish to be restated in relation to this application with a caveat or a clarification, that that view is now made more strongly because it's on the back of a plan that's got more weight. Do you follow me? That's where we're trying to get to with the draft reason, and that's probably as clear and as rational as it can get at this stage. It doesn't undermine the plan, it just recognises that it's at a particular point in its status. Thank you chairman.
Thank you, we're going to have to bring this to a conclusion at some point, I'll just take the officers first, and then I'll come back to councillors MacLeod and Fraser. Peter, you wish to speak?
Thank you chairman, based on that, which is helpful, I've put together a sort of draft principal reason for refusal, if you're happy for me to read that out, chairman. The proposed development by reason of its design, scale and form fails to retain the landscape character of Old Park and would have a detrimental impact on the landscape value. The proposal therefore conflicts with policy FMP10 of the Farnham neighbourhood plan. It also suggests two further reasons, which are more sort of holding reasons, in the absence of the completion of the section 106. absence of the completion of the section 106. The first one is actually on page 59 of your agenda, the one listed previous reason for refusal, the applicant has failed to enter into an appropriate legal agreement to secure a SUDS management plan, an open space management plan, proposal therefore conflicts with policies D13 and D14 of the Waverley local plan, and paragraph 203 of the MPPF, and FMP 32 of the neighbourhood plan. And then the last, the third reason, the applicant has failed to enter into an appropriate legal agreement, secure the provision of a suitable, secure the provision of SANG, and therefore the local planning authority considers that the proposal, in combination with other projects, would have a likely significant, likely adverse effect on the integrity of the Thames Basin Heath SPA. Accordingly, since the planning authority is not satisfied that regulation 62 of the conservation habitats and species regulations 2010 applies in this case, it must refuse the application in accordance with regulation 61.5 of that, of those regulations. Proposal therefore conflicts with policy NRM6 of the South East Plan and the National Planning Policy Frameworks. So I'd suggest those three, based on your discussions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor MacLeod?
Thank you, Chairman. Two points really. I thought councillor Williamson made a strong point in his contribution, the one about the safety mitigation and the lane being impossible, because there wasn't the land available to put it into effect. Second point, I didn't really understand the point being made about the inspector had made a judgement of facts, but was it the point that once the inspector has stated something to be the case, that becomes a fact? Because that was what was being said, the judgement, the inspector's got to be regarded as a fact, regardless of whether we disagree with it or not, is that what's being said?
councillor, essentially, that's the point, because the submissions would be advanced in terms of those particular policies, and from your previous decision, there was a suggestion that there was planning harm, so what happens is that becomes a fact in issue. Is there planning harm in this case? That's what inspectors appointed by the Secretary of State are tasked to determine on a daily basis. Is there planning harm? Is there conflict with policy? Now, council, solicitors, planning consultants up and down the country make these submissions and arguments based upon, is there a planning harm in terms of a particular policy? Developers will argue the converse, and in that, there may be all sorts of submissions in terms of traffic reports, if it's a traffic reason for refusal, and the traffic reports will be produced, and the county council may argue another way, but essentially, what happens is that all goes into the mounting pot, and the inspector has to make findings. He or she will say, I don't believe that evidence is correct because, or I put more weight on that evidence because, or I found that witness more credible because, and from all of those arguments, they have to make findings. That is to say, whether or not there's a conflict or not with a policy, and therefore planning harm. So it is a finding of fact. You are bound by that inspector's decision. That argument in terms of policy FNP 10 at paragraph 14 of that inspector, yes, I take the point, it was an emerging plan, it's not at the level it is now, but the argument was made. The argument was made, the inspector heard that argument, for and against, okay, in terms of that harm to FNP 10. He then tasked himself to put the weight to that, that he saw fit, given the stage it was at. So the arguments were heard, he came to a conclusion and said, the overall reduction in built form, and as the development would reflect the rural nature of the location, conclusion now, the existing landscape character would be retained, which would preserve the setting of the heritage assets. That is a finding of fact, having heard that dispute. Now, with that in mind, he then goes to the planning judgement of, how now do I look at that policy in terms of the weight I should afford to it, given I've made a conclusion? Given I've come to a conclusion on that argument, is there now a breach of that particular policy, given the level and weight I must attribute it to it? He said, no. Simple as that.
May I just come back and say that, I'm sure you're giving us proper legal advice and good advice, but what you're essentially saying is that inspectors are infallible, and we are not allowed to agree with, and maybe, listen...
We'll be here all night, I hope, if we go down.
Can I just bring back to my first point I made, so it's not forgotten, about the point that councillor Williamson made about the safety mitigation issue on the lane not being impossible because there's not land available to shave it? Is that worthwhile, going into reasons for refusal?
I think we've been told no already, but can I just say something else that we haven't put into the mix? This is outside the built-up area boundary, as well as within an area of the Old Park, and the inspector, the examiner, not the inspector for here, the examiner did endorse the built-up area boundary in his judgement. So I think really what I'm trying to say is, the neighbourhood plan is so new to so many of you, and, you know, we don't know in depth what it says, and the combination of all the policies that have now been endorsed, and, you know, maybe we should be looking at it further, you know, as, in terms of what, I know we can't revisit the whole thing, I know what Elizabeth's going to say, we had the neighbourhood plan before, but, you know, this is outside the built-up area boundary, which has now been endorsed not only by the examiner in his report, but also by the public. So it's outside the built-up area boundary, it's in this area of the Old Park, which is specifically designated as a special area within the report. So, you know, I do think there is more to be said to protect this. I take Dan's point, I know that an inspector revisits the whole of the application, we know that, but there were so many unknowns when we were looking at it in the first time in terms of the neighbourhood plan, which I would say are now much firmer and much more known, and I think, you know, anything we can add from the neighbourhood plan, because as councillor Hargreaves and the others have said, you know, this is the work of the people of Farnham, endorsed by the people of Farnham, and although I know numbers don't make a planning application right or wrong, we've been told that 100 times, this is the first time that this neighbourhood plan has been tested. It's an unfortunate, if you like, juxtaposition of dates and times and everything, it couldn't have come at a worse time, but, you know, we are where we are, and we do have a very brand-new neighbourhood plan that we're all getting to know. Some of the officers, I'm not sure fully understand the status of a neighbourhood plan, and I'm not blaming them for that, I mean, it's all new to all of us, you know, we're all just learning on the job, as it were, this is the first one in Farnham, sorry, in Waverley, Farnham's the first one. So again, if there is something we can do to strengthen any of the policies, and I think we should put it forward. I'm going to be told I'm wrong now, thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. No, I'm not going to disagree with you for once this evening. FMP 11 I suggest you include as well, which talks, is more the coalescence, but, sorry, I'm on the wrong page, apologies, one sec. FMP 11 I would suggest, because that talks about the protection of development outside of the built-up area boundary, which I think is exactly what you're referring to, so I would suggest we also refer to that in the reason for refusal. Thank you, Chairman.
I do have a couple of other speakers, but unless you're going to add to something for that reason, I think we should move to the recommendation to refuse. So please, if it's new and not newish, and it's relevant, then I'll take it. councillor Fraser? Right. councillor Hyman?
Thank you. Yes, it's the addition of, we've had this before, so it's not new, but it's new today, just 113 to be added to the, it mentions MPPF paragraphs 118 and 119 in the standard thing, but it's, but 113 has always been 113, yes. But I would ask, is it a fact, because I believe it is so, and we've got to stick to the fact, that where we started was with compliance with CIL regulations and habitats, is it a fact that we have a failure here to satisfy CIL 122? Because I believe it is, and I'd like an absolute statement from officers, because this is quite a judicial process.
I'm going to take that outside the meeting. We really want to move on now to the recommendation, you can sort that out with the officers, and if it's something we should be included, and I'm sure the officers will tell you, but I think now we've got as strong a refusal as we are going to get. Peter, are you quite happy that, well, not happy, but you feel we have got some grounds on which we can fight a refusal on this? Up to a point.
I think it goes without saying, Chairman, that we have tried to support the debate and the outcome as closely as possible, but this is not going to be easy in any appeal that may come out of this, but we have, as officers, listened to the debate, we accept your judgement on this, and the wording that Peter will read out again is best endeavours to support that case, but it's not in any way intended to undermine the plan. We're as delighted as the town council that the plan had a success at referendum, but it is just where we are with the particular chronology on this site. Thank you, Chairman.
Right, thank you, Peter. So have you got it in a form that you can remind us, so there's a recommendation to refuse for the following reason?
Yes, so reason one, the proposed development by reason of design, scale, and form fails to retain landscape character of Old Park and would have a detrimental impact on the landscape value. Proposal is therefore conflicts with policies FMP 10 and 11 of the Farnham neighbourhood plan. And if you're happy, Chairman, I won't reread the reasons two and three, but would suggest they are as set out on page 94 of your agenda, to deal with the SUDS management and open space and the SANG, and we will include reference to 113, if members agree that's appropriate to the SANG reason for refusal. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, Peter mentioned that with FMP 10. Yeah, that was there. Right, is everyone quite happy with that? You've all seen page 94, so you know the SUDS, it's written out for you there, plus the refusal on FMP 10 and 11. So the recommendation, the revised recommendation is to refuse the application. Please, can I see all those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And those against?
Two.
And any abstentions? Got to be quicker than that, councillor Nabil. So it's no abstentions, three against.
Three against, I'm sorry.
Right, is there anything else we have to do? That's it. Well, thank you, members, I knew it was going to be difficult, didn't quite know it was going to be that difficult, but there you go, it's very new to us all, so thank you very much indeed for your patience, and thank you, officers, for dealing with us so patiently as ever, thank you.